Flag the lead into the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor?
Motion to approve the meetings. Minutes November fourteenth.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve the minutes of meeting by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll stand.
Make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
First by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item five, which is setting mills for 2013, at 10.5 mills for the general real estate fund and .33 mills for the library fund, total of 10.83, which is what it is right now. Questions or comments?
Does that mean the budget's been passed?
No.
Well, so you set the mill rate in advance in preparation for the...
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, I would like to introduce our deputy chief clerk here is here, Amanda Wilston. Amanda?
Ooh, ooh.
All right.
Thank you.
Item six.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item six, which is the ratify the cash disbursements, electronic fund transfers as so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the following seminar request of payments as listed. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good move.
Item to approve, motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to adopt the resolution to adopt the Susquehanna County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Questions or comments?
Are there copies of those available?
No.
I just wanted to get them.
Get, I'm sorry, the copies of the resolutions, is that what you were asking?
Yes.
That's what I thought she was asking, yes. I forgot to put them out, I'm sorry.
You have a question, ma'am?
Yes, can you explain what this mitigation, hazard mitigation plan is and give any details?
It's a very complex book. It's a mitigation plan which involves all the different townships, municipalities, a plan that promotes awareness and identification of the hazards in the county. It's a plan that meets both FEMA and FEMA's criteria. If you'd like, you can meet with the EMA director, we'll be glad to go over it.
So the EMA director is who?
Robert Stroud.
Bob what?
Robert Stroud.
Robert Stroud.
Robert Stoudt.
And then, Stoudt, and you can meet with him, we are in the courthouse?
In his office.
In the extension building?
Yes.
And we can see the copy of it?
I don't know if you can see it, but he'll be glad to discuss it with you. There is confidential information that's not available to the public.
It's not available to the public?
Some of the information is not available to the public. But you can meet with him and he'll explain it to you.
Thank you.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the resolution to adopt the Susquehanna County Hazardous and Tails Emergency Response Plan for Transportation Incidents. Questions or comments? Yes.
I imagine this could involve accidents with vehicles with chemicals on them, so are we, is that mostly state that covers those? If there's accidents on state routes, would that be the state police or the state agency etc.?
Well, it's, the plan, the plan is broken down, it covers the incident as to, you know, any hazardous spill the state is going to be involved in. Any hazardous spill, the local first responders responded, and this covers the first responders, the fire departments, the townships, the boroughs, and all the protocols on, you know, each step they're supposed to go through to make sure that they comply with all the regulations.
Because it's my understanding now that the county or local municipality doesn't get involved at all. I mean, we've had multiple incidents. The DEP just said yesterday that they're just finishing up their investigation on the explosion at the, at the compressor station. And they're, that's nine, 10 months later that they're doing that. So I'm, I'm just concerned, I'm seeing here, I like that it's on there, I like that Robert Stoudt was looking at that, but just wondering based on the, how little that's been done by the county or power they have over anything that's done, especially, I don't care what is involved, whether it's gas industry or not, if you get a finger flipped with a bunch of chemicals on it, I don't know what anybody, people can do. We saw what happened at the compressor taking plant, so I'll probably go over and talk and move on after, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Ten. Motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to adopt Susquehanna County Hazardous and Tails Emergency Response Plan for Unconventional Well Sites as recommended by Commissioner Robert Stroud. Questions or comments?
Did you please explain in some detail what this covers?
Well, it covers the, the, meeting the protocols of the state and federal government, making sure that we have plans in place for a situation as to who responds, how they respond to it on. It makes awareness to the individual first responders as to the different sites that need to be taken care of. It also takes and deals with all the, this deals with all the unconventional well sites and the shale well sites to basically protect the lives and property of the association to address.
So once again, now, now we're being specific on unconventional well sites. I mean, I've had dumping on my property, destruction of my property, the state found and guilty, both agencies, Fish and Boat and, and the DEP. So is this a change of position from Susquehanna County? Because we've been, I've been coming here for nine or 10 months, and I've never heard a word about the county getting involved in any business of that. So this is actually exciting for me to see. I'll go talk to Bob again.
And I think that's what you need to do, you talk to Bob and you go over it and...
I'm even putting the word unconventional in here, who puts the language on these? Because that's not...
Well, these plans are, these plans are required from the state, so...
Okay, perfect, I'll go, I'll go speak to them, I'm really happy to see this on the...
All in favor?
No, I have a question.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, I'd like to know why, I'd like to see why this doesn't get read here in the courthouse, in this room. County adoption resolution? Because here it says how, that there's a potential exists for life-threatening incidents while these materials are transported, utilized, or stored. There's a potential that exists for devastating effects on the environment. So why don't you read this? And then it was given to us late and we couldn't even read it ahead of time. So can you read that to us? It's not that long, it's like a page of what this emergency response plan for unconventional well sites is about.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the, the task force for the emergency preparedness task force for the members. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. I'm sorry.
Pat Farney, I have a question. Does this implement training for the first responders?
The task force works with all the different municipalities, they talk about training and, and, you know, what needs to be done and who needs to get training, what type of training, so they do work on all that, the task forces. Do they provide the training themselves? No. But they, they try to figure out what training is needed and...
That's part of this.
Yeah. Item 12.
Motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve the local emergency planning committee for three years, 2012 through 2013. Questions or comments?
And how do you choose the people that are on this list? You have about 10, 20 people on this list who are on the planning committee. How do you choose them? Who chooses them?
I think part of those committees, you want to respond on that? How the current members are, you know, how the current members are chosen?
Most of these are people that have been on there for a number of years that have participated. It's required that the three of us be on it. A member of the state police has to be on it. There's certain criteria that's set forth as to who has to be on it. And quite often, the people that are already on it choose to fulfill the number, to fill vacancies, to become a part of it.
Now, what about putting a local citizen on there? At least one or two residents, local residents on a committee like this? Have you thought about that?
There are.
I think there were someone on here, Phyllis Mack, the mayor.
And does she have a position at all in the county? Does she have a job in the county?
Don't know.
What is, what is her background? And then who made the final decision for all these people? Did all of you have to...
They're making it right now.
We just did.
You just did, so you're making the final decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the awarding bids for the November 14th, 2012 commissioners meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Fourteen. Motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve the bid for refuse service for the period of December 1st, 2012 through December, November 30th, 2014, to Joe's disposal service. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Make a motion to approve number, item number 15 is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to accept resignation of Patricia Stummel from 911. Questions or comments?
I'd like to know why she's resigning.
That's her personal reason.
How long has she been employed?
Few weeks.
Brand new person, she's out. We're now, they saw her on the list before, okay, so...
And why do you have such a turnover in 911? I keep seeing as for that. What's, what's the problem there?
Well, a lot of people, well, a lot of people can't handle the stress when they get into the environment. Going with the phone calls, the situations on the phones, what's going on, those types of issues, you know, sounds like something they want to do, and then when they get in there, you know, it's not what they, the stress of the job is not something they can handle emotionally. And other people, you know, they get into a position and, you know, it's not really what they really wanted, but, you know, people are looking for jobs and they see something available and they apply. So, yes.
What was her official capacity?
She was the, going to be the technical support person.
Would she be the same person that Michael Pankowski is going to be employed with?
Yes.
What's his, oh, go ahead, read the next one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sixteen.
Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments? What are his, what is his background and what are his qualifications for the job?
He's got all the necessary backgrounds.
For example?
For the Microsoft and networking and all those criteria, he meets all that criteria.
The reason I'm asking this, there's been an awful lot of, this one's leaving, we got one right in his box.
Well, when we advertised for that position, we had several applications for it. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 17 is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to hire Laura Holbrook of Bridgewater Township to the full, to the open full-time position of Chesapeake Bay Technician Resource Conservation. Questions or comments? Yes.
Okay, this is from Chesapeake Bay Technician.
Right.
So we're talking about following the Chesapeake Bay's plan?
Um, we have a delegation with the state to follow Chesapeake Bay regulations.
Are you guys aware how far off that is? I mean, the D E S is off the charts right now, we're never going to meet the requirements for next year's. I mean, I just want to make sure you're aware, because I've lived in Virginia for 40 years, so I'm very familiar with the Chesapeake Bay. Half the water, even the Chesapeake Bay comes from the Susquehanna River, so we're directly impacting that by any activity up here. And I'm talking farming too, but what's the problem with farming before? Now we've got all the clearing going on for the gas activity, it's, it's gone up exponentially. Brett Jennings is a real, he's a borough counselor in Great Bend, but he's an expert on the water issues. Is it just county residents that are on it? Who's on the actual committee itself?
Oh, on the Chesapeake Bay Committee?
Yeah, for Laura Holbrook, it's going to be...
Or Susquehanna County?
Yes.
Yes. For Susquehanna County, there's only residents in Susquehanna County on it.
Perfect, okay.
It is, it's a delegated program through the state and it's funded through the state.
Well, I'm happy we have that, I'm just wondering how, if they know what is coming next year because the requirements are going to be...
Do these committees meet with the, and are the pub, is the public allowed to attend these meetings? And where are they posted? You have several people, several motions here where there were committees, it was on the first page, the 9/11 stuff, the planning committee and the actual committee. Do they, do they meet and are they open? When they meet, are they open to the public and is it posted on the website?
I don't know if it's posted on the website.
Posted on the website, I think it's advertised at the beginning of the year in January, anyway, the meetings are going to be...
Are there any between now and January? And how would I find out?
The conservation district, for this particular...
Well, in general, I mean, are they posted on the, on the Susquehanna County website?
Not on the Susquehanna County.
Not on the website.
Why not?
You put...
You have a website, why not? Can, can you...
We can look into it.
Can you affect that?
We can look into it.
The conservation district actually has their own website.
Right.
Is it, is it advertised in the, in the public notices section in the local newspaper?
I think at the beginning of the year when they advertise their meetings.
So...
I'm not, I can't...
Well, my, well, basically, I'm getting a transparency. There's all these meetings and people who are hired and taxpayer money going to fund them and all their various positions and jobs, et cetera, and when they meet, the public should have an opportunity to attend. And I guess if you miss that issue of the newspaper, whichever one it is, which one is it?
I don't know if they advertise it.
Well, with, is it the transcript? Is it the independent?
I'll have to find out, I'll get back to you.
You, how will you get back to it?
I'll either contact you or I'll...
I'll have to...
Contact you.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Item 18.
Motion to approve item number 18 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to hire Jessica Brandt of Bridgewater Township to the open part-time position of dispatcher trainee for 911. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
It's time we have public comment. Oh, there we go, we got one more thing, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase Kubota F-3680 four-wheel drive tractor for the maintenance department through Cheverline Lawn and RV. Total cost is $27,786. That includes delivery and training.
And this is under state contract, and the line must supply the state contract number when they, when they, of course, deliver. Any questions or comments?
Could you stop the brand new?
It's Kubota, K-U-B-O-T-A.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a question or comment?
That was put out for bid beforehand, right?
No, it's a state bid, we don't have to go because they're, it's already under state bid process. And actually, the state bid discount is like, it's like almost 38 percent off the machine price, that's what it shows. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. I don't have a public comment. Yes, Mr. Stevens.
I know that you're busy, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this because it's very, what you just passed. Susquehanna County Materials Emergency Response Plan for Unconventional Well Sites County Adoption Resolution, Resolution Number 2012-28, Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania. Whereas natural gas has been discovered in the Marcellus Shale region of Pennsylvania and whereas Susquehanna County resides in the Marcellus Shale region of Pennsylvania and whereas drilling, extraction, and distribution of natural gas and other byproducts is occurring in Susquehanna County and whereas certain materials utilized in the drilling and extraction processes are classified as hazardous according to Act 165 of 1990 and whereas the potential exists for life-threatening incidents while these materials are transported, utilized, or stored and whereas the potential exists for devastating effects on the environment and whereas the Susquehanna County Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Plan for unconventional well sites has been developed by the Susquehanna County Emergency Management Agency, Corporation of Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and whereas the Susquehanna County Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Plan for unconventional well sites coordinates the actions and resources necessary for response and or recovery efforts essential to the remediation of conditions caused by an emergency incident occurring at or in transit to a shale well site in order to protect the lives and properties of citizens. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body or the county of Susquehanna that the Susquehanna County Hazardous material emergency response plan for unconventional well sites is hereby adopted as an incident-specific plan to the Susquehanna County Emergency Operations Plan and the respective officials and agencies identified in the plan are hereby directed to implement the recommended activities assigned and adopted since 28 days of November 2012. And the only one thing to add, this came out the day that we had the last meeting that we attended, this is the insert in the Logan Shocking ad that's there every week, it has our firefighters from Montrose on the front, which is great, got the heroes on the front, and it's about Cabot's support of the community, which I love. I mean, there's, there's really good things in here, supporting the 2.2 million for the health care, providing for students in education, $100,000 student scholarship fund, student challenge program, engineer, energy career day, Susquehanna County Library, Susquehanna County Interface, United Way American Red Cross, where there's responders, so I'm, I'm very happy with that. The problem I'm having is, and if you get a chance to read it, I will read this last portion, where caring for community is a way of life. At Cabot, we believe that community should be judged by the concern they show for their most needy and vulnerable members. That's why we're so proud to be a part of the Susquehanna County region, a place filled with big-hearted people who care for each other and step up in times of need. We're just happy to play our role and be a part of such a wonderful community. I would believe that statement, they're very good in this ad at presenting how much money they've donated to the community, which, great, I'd like to say thank you to Cabot publicly for donating that money. The problem I'm having is what you won't find in any of this advertising is how much they've money, they've money they've paid people to be quiet. Because I know for sure over in Dimmock, they've paid multi-millions of dollars for people to shut their mouths, and those people's mouths have been shut. So I like the part where we advertise the good things that they're doing, I don't like the part where they never, we never find one word, one iota of negative about what's happening. There's always a balance in life, we know that. There's good, there's bad, we have to balance in the middle to find out what we can do. That is very interesting to me, so now we have those two documents, so I'm very curious, so I'm hoping everybody thanks the people that are helping our community with their donations, but also ask them a question, and hopefully this is not payment to people so we all look at the good side of this and nobody ever looks at any negatives, especially since they disappeared before the courthouse staffs. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a couple.
Go ahead, sir.
When will the budget be available for the public to finally look at?
Yeah, on the desk Monday, right?
December 5th.
Well, when do you get, when do you plan to bring it up on the agenda to pass it?
December, I believe it's 28th, it's last week, yeah.
So it'll be out there approximately a month?
It has to be out there 20 days.
And if someone wants to look at it and compare it to last year's budget, current year's budget, how would they go about doing that?
It'll be on the counter.
Both?
No, we only put your current year's budget. If you do a write-to-know, you could get last year's.
Well, just to look at it?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so, so that's number one. Second question, has anything, have you ever finished the business about the pension plan going from one company to the next company? Has that ever been settled?
Yeah, it's, almost all completely transferred over, and now that it's almost completely transferred over, we're starting to go through, and I've got to schedule a meeting with the individual to sit down with him and make sure everything's in place to where it's supposed to be. We've already made our first payments out of the retirement fund from the new company, so that's been gone through without any problems. There was any errors or no issues whatsoever, so all that's been done.
How come none of that was ever on the agenda to inform the public?
Of what?
That you, that it's done, that you've actually transferred money from one company to the other.
That was part of the, the motion in the agenda item to do.
But it was never... But it was never signed. We don't know what the result was. It was up in the air.
No, it was approved in a meeting and transferred from one company to the other.
Right, but, but from that point on, you don't know when, if it happened.
Well, when we said we were gonna, we said we were gonna do it, it's gonna happen. It just takes the, the calendar time to take and make a process to...
It's approximately six months or so?
Yeah, it was close to that, yeah, a little bit less.
Was the money sitting in a bay or was, or was the pension fund making money?
It was still making money.
In which account?
It was in the, it was in the account that it was in last year.
If I still have time?
Working.
Okay. I would like to ask the commissioner, coming up, coming up on the new year, if you would consider actually creating real minutes that reflect what conversations you have with the public and what conversations we have with the commissioner. I don't know if we're gonna have two deputy clerks, chief clerk sitting here, but if we do, we certainly have enough lady power, and I don't see any reason why it couldn't happen.
Yeah.
And I'd like you to consider that. Right now, we don't have minutes, we just have an agenda with a feeling of when we started, what we voted, and when it ended. There is no public comment on deputy.
Any other comments?
And why do we have two deputy clerks here? Do you need more people to take the minutes? Are you taking more minutes?
No, deputy chief clerk's here because she is in training, and if the chief clerk is out, the deputy clerk needs to see what happens at this meeting, so that's why she's here. Any other comment? Yes.
I'd also like to say that I had to do a file review to find out what's going on in our county with the DEP for water contamination, and when the file review was done, it wasn't found the determination letters, because I heard from one of the inspectors at the DEP that Lennox has been contaminated by Cabot. Even though Cabot, like they like to advertise in the local papers, they're doing extra, taking extra care for the environment, taking extra precautions, they have now contaminated another section east of Dimmock. There are several homes there, and I have the determination letters, but I had to get them after the file review. I had to do a write-to-know to get the determination letters. I'd like to know why it's so difficult to do that, and it's not announced on the DEP sites when we have a contaminated area and that it's been decided. So we have here letters that I got from the DEP. Andrew Chichura in Kingsley, he has been determined to be contaminated since over a year ago, and he's receiving replacement water for over a year. He used to be the superintendent of our schools in Mountain View. Then we also have a letter for Norman and Dorothy Jensen, also in that area, they have a home. Then Janet Rozell has a home there. And there's another name, and let's see, I don't think I have that one at this point, but I left it at home, but we have these names, and these people are receiving replacement water, and it's coming from a company that's been doing this for four years almost, and for four years almost. And this is the parish company. And they have a 1,000-gallon stainless steel tank truck. They go around our whole county and give replacement water. And they're hired by the gas companies and paid for by the gas companies to replace the water. And they're using Montrose water. And it's not really a desirable water. We're talking Montrose-treated water with high chlorine. And this is what they give people. Once your water goes bad and you're willing to contact the authorities, and it takes about a year or more to determine this. So now we're hearing about this, but I had to ask about it. It hasn't been made in the news or public sufficiently to show that Cabot has been determined to have caused the gas migration and the migration of metals in their water. So they cannot use their water anymore. So I'd like to know if you can do something with the DEP and tell them to put that on their DEP site every time they have a determination. Put it on your site and let the people know. We need to know what's happening in our county. This is only part of the problem, and they're not putting it out there. We have to go to file reviews, we have to go to write-to-knows. That's a lot of work for a citizen to do, and most citizens won't even do that. So this is what's the latest now with Lennox, and I want to make that public. And I'm, I'm bringing this to the news media, to the major news medias, and I guess maybe we'll get some articles finally about what is the latest thing that Cabot has done, even though they claim they're doing every precaution and there's no problems. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Very quickly, I'd like, as a former first responder, I'd like to thank the committee for doing motion number 10. There were a lot of meetings. I had to sit on the whole week, compared to a nuclear disaster to happen in New Jersey, and you never want it to happen, but everybody knows what they're doing, and it shows a lot of foresight. And to answer the public's comment about why it is that there's such a high turnover for 911 dispatch team, it's one thing to say that you can sit on the end of the phone and hear someone screaming as they're dying instead of actually doing it. And obviously, you've stood in front of somebody who's dying and you can't save them. I understand people think they can do this job, and they can't. And if you're sitting on the end of the phone line listening to somebody and you know that you cannot give them the help of the time, it can destroy a person.
Thank you.
Another comment in relation to that. If that's the case, I keep seeing turnovers like every month and maybe even every week, then maybe they need to do some kind of a psychological test or a psychological questionnaire and say, you know, are you able to endure this? If somebody's dying on the phone or being killed and they're crying out for help, are you able to handle this? So that might be something to consider.
Quickly.
Very quick. On the phone with DEP, calling Connelly yesterday, still no determination on the one-year anniversary coming up on December 6th of what's happened in Franklin Forks. It ties in exactly what we were talking about with what's happening down in Lennox and also what happened in Demick. Same company, Guy Parish driving all over this county delivering water to people. And none of us even either knew it was happening or until we all investigated it, that it is happening. So I'd like, I'm gonna talk to Robert Stow about being more active and what's going on in the county.
Why quick?
Because you're allowed it a certain amount of time.
Okay, three minutes.
Right. Is that three minutes twice now?
I heard, is it three minutes?
I get three minutes per...
No, it's three minutes.
Could you show me where that's in the public policy?
I don't have to show it in public policy.
It's three minutes.
Where can I make your statement?
Oh, here's my statement, because you're proving it now. Why is it that the commissioners have an attitude that when someone says, "We may have a problem in this county," you have an expression of disdain and contempt, and can we get through this quickly on your faces? Do you like dirty water? Do you want to be the next Love Canal? Do you want something to come out of your tap that would make you have the same issues that she's talking about? None of us, none of us here are against drilling. None of us here are against gas or oil. We're against and we're terrified of the day may happen to us. And when it's brought up to you, you just, next. I think that is contemptuous and it's not participatory government. It's we'll tell you, don't tell us. That's my comment.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
There was a motion, I'll second that.
We are adjourned?